At 5:00 PM. So, we're called to order. And just remember, this is a site visit, so we can't take any testimony. We're just here to look.
You mean, we can't talk about it?
We can talk about it. We can't make decisions or take official testimony for the record.
But we can talk to each other.
Right, but we can talk as we're looking.
We can say things like, "This sucks."
You know, this is on. Okay. Is there a car coming, you said?
I thought I heard one. Maybe it was on.
All right. Well, let's get started. I thought Alfred was joining us, but I don't see him.
So, it looks like he's making it out.
Now, this doesn't have any... There's no official recognition of, "This is where Chapin Forest is." Am I correct? There's no sign that anybody's ever put up?
No, not as far as we know.
In contrary, there's private...
It's just a private track.
Okay. Because it says, "No trespassing," or something. It says, "No trespassing," right?
This is no hunting. This is property line. So, the right side of the road is private.
The left side is on the left side.
As far as I know, it's like the corner is here somewhere, and it's just this side of the road.
So, it's just the left side of the road?
I think that's right.
I know it's on the left side.
So, why does it...
It's the town's right-of-way.
This is the town's right-of-way?
Right-of-way or the town's property? Well, they don't want it... This is... The orange is...
Wait. Hey, guys? Everybody's talking all at once. So, if we're going to be on the same page with where we are and what we're looking at, it'd be good to do it together. Oh, here's John.
So, this is the town right-of-way.
This road is a town...
It's a Class 4 road.
Class 4 road.
Which is prop... And somewhere in here is the property line?
Presumably.
So, I think Neil said that the town forest is on the left side of this road. Oh, it says, "No hunting." So, whose property is on the right side? Do we know?
I'm not sure who does on that.
It's one of the adjacent property owners, I think.
It might be Jay LaCare. I know he owns property up here. And he said his property bordered mine on the top edge.
Okay, are you on this road?
Other end.
Oh, the other end of Pekin, okay. All right, who we got here?
So, this is the town forest.
Hi. How are you? Good. And you are?
Hey, Steve Frank.
Steve Frank.
Good, how you doing?
You're all great, my guy.
Yeah, well.
Watch it, Rick. Okay, so what I understand is, the town forest, Neil said, starts down there at the corner, kind of at the bumper of John's car. The town... This is a Class 4 road. I don't know what the...
The town has a right-of-way on this road.
Right, and the town forest is on the left, and the property on the right is owned by...
I don't know if it's Jay LaCare. I know that he owns property here somewhere. I'm not exactly sure.
A woman owns this land here. There's a little spot. You go down further, and his is on the right and comes back out up there.
Okay, so... Are these the mark... I wonder if these are the marks that Alfred put up for parking? Oh, okay. So, do we think... Oh, this must be the...
Yeah, this is the parking lot that he would...
Yeah, so Jerome?
These are the forest.
These are, look like, the stakes that Alfred put in for a parking area, which doesn't...
So, the town forest is here?
Yes.
Yeah.
Only on this side of the road?
Right, yeah.
You go in there, and there's a gorgeous ridge that runs down.
How did the town come to acquire this?
I don't know. I was curious about it. My guess is it was some kind of tax forfeiture, because it just sort of shows up on the town's record not all that long ago. And it came in different...
The town owns this, as I can remember. That's a long time ago. They didn't just become a... They, back in the '80s, they took wood off it for poor people that had no firewood.
1980s?
Yeah, because I pulled some of the wood out for them, and they blocked it up and put it in the old town shed where the town hall...
Town office.
Town office.
Yeah, there used to be an old garage there at the town office.
And that's what they filled that up with a mess of wood and gave it out to people that needed wood.
Oh, here comes Alfred.
But they might have gotten it from tax sale years ago, but they've owned it for a...
Hi there. How are you? So, I think this is where you mark for the parking spots? And this is enough area for... What do we say, six?
Six parking areas, it takes 54 feet.
54 feet per...
Nine foot wide. They want parking area nine foot. So, if you're backing in here, it'll be 54 feet.
Okay, so for each vehicle, it would be nine feet?
That's right.
And it would be like six in a row fit than that? Yeah. And that's what that is?
I didn't measure it.
Yeah, okay, so it's approximate, yeah.
When we had our first site visit here, this is sort of what we talked about. So, I put stakes in relevant to that.
Okay.
Given the fact that six cars wasn't exactly...
Yeah, we've kind of...
Determined, yeah.
Right.
How far down is your house? Down that way?
My house?
Yeah.
I'm on George Road, so you'd have to go all the way through here, hit Pekin Brook, go up a little bit, and take a lap.
Hi. Can I just get your name for the record?
Tyler Clark.
Now, are you a property owner here?
Yeah, right here, 602 Chapin Road.
Okay, so we're just looking at the parking area. This is where the road commissioner... Yep, blocked it off, marked it off. All right, does anybody want to walk a little further and see?
Any trails from here at all? Well, just privately, as far as I know. There's no...
I think just leave it. I don't know. We'd have to talk about that, I guess. Okay, now, these are posted, "No trespassing," on... So, it must be just that side, right?
Have you ever been on the Bullson Town Forest trail?
It's beautiful here, isn't it?
It's sort of that idea, but not expansive, because this is only a 34-acre tract, I think. But the hope would be, I think, maybe I'm just judging myself, but those trails in Bullson were laid out with the help of Eric Sorensen, who, I don't know if you know him...
Is this? I don't know.
One of the most important people in California.
Oh, because there's all kinds of sticks and everything. Tree about to tip over. Well, I don't know how far we really need to go.
It used to be a really beautiful... He brought me into the Seabed. It was a beautiful stone, laid up.
It just streamed across the water. Apparently, it got washed out there.
So, I don't know how far we really need to go. The whole idea was to see about a parking area. Yeah. It's beautiful. It's really beautiful. And John noticed that it must be having been mowed?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't think so. I think it's just the vehicle's traveling on it.
So, who would... So, would somebody travel on this to get to which road?
You can't take a regular vehicle, because there's a here and a there.
I think it just doesn't grow that good.
Oh, okay. But somebody with an ATV or something could, right? Not anymore?
There is a washed-out culvert that's...
Well, and there's... There's a spot, as you're going down the hill, on the right-hand side, the bank is all eroded, and it's all washed out. Get down a little further, and there's an old stone culvert there, and the stone culvert's washed out.
So, it's not like you're going to take ATVs all the way through, right? Because of the washed-out culvert and stuff?
I mean, they might try you.
I'm sure you can get through with an ATV or a dirt bike, but you're not going to...
Hi, Tom.
I don't know. I haven't looked at it for a while. You know what I mean? You can drive, but you can't drive with an ATV.
Okay, so...
I don't mowing this, anybody know?
I don't think anybody is. I think it just doesn't grow very good. There's not much fertility, and there's lots of leaves. All my roads that are in the woods, they look like that. I don't mow them. Maybe Jay. Jay owns land down here. His land comes out right down here.
Is that Jay LaCare? Is this his land over here, too? Do you know?
Yeah. I don't know if he bought this land that the people own. I told you. You can see his marker right here on the right somewhere, and he owns all the way down to Mees Dale's land, I believe, on the right-hand side. Probably right across from where the proposed parking area is.
Okay.
But not this far down?
Yeah.
Larry, are there any ash trees here?
Did he buy that open lot? Oh, then maybe he did. So, maybe he does. Maybe I haven't given you guys. He does actually.
Okay, so I got it right. Yay, I got it right. Score for me. I got the name of a tree right, the ash tree. They have that... They have that...
Ash borer?
Ash borer.
Not yet, they're doing fine.
Yeah. All right, let's head back. Neil, do you know how many acres the town owns? Tom, do you know how many acres the town owns?
I think it's 20.
20?
Maybe 20.5 or something like that. I know it's 20, at least 20.
We could ask. Yeah, we could ask Alfred that. And I guess the question I have, too, is, would it just be drive-in at your own risk? Or are we going to... I mean, that's not a decision that we can make today, but I just wonder... Is it going to be like, are we going to have to keep this parking area mowed? Or you just drive in and take your chances?
And cameras have installed them from here.
So, I guess my question is... And I'm waiting for Alfred. The neighbors worried about runoff. I don't... I mean, it's already... Hey, Alfred? So, the neighbors mentioned something about being concerned about runoff. Would we be looking at just leaving this like this? Mowing it? What... I mean...
No, it would be gravel.
Hi, guys. Hi. Nice to see you, okay.
Kelly Knapp, what was your name?
Kyle Booth.
Kyle Booth? And what was your name? So, we just were looking at... This is the road commissioner marked off, where you can see these stakes, and we just walked a little further down. It's beautiful.
What is the... Would this just be mowed? I mean, degraded and just mowed occasionally? Or would there be any surfacing of it, like anything?
Well, I think it really depends on our intention. I mean, if we're going to plow it, then it's going to have to be gravelled and, you know...
Well, I don't...
It's big enough for it to be... For trucks to turn around. So, it really... I've got to know what you guys want before I can really answer.
Well, I guess we'd have to see what the conservation commission is thinking. And like I said, this is a site visit, so we just have to be careful what we talk about. So, I don't... We'd have to obviously talk about this at a meeting at another time. Right. But I don't know about plowing it in the winter?
Can I just add a little part of this? Neil, correct me if I get this wrong, but at the last conservation commission's meeting, where we had a long discussion about this, as it resolved itself, I think we actually agreed that we didn't want to recommend pursuing the winter access.
Right, okay.
That require all of that work and problems. Just start small, the smallest possible road access. You know, a modest, little, well-built parking area here that protects from runoff and all. And then just see. So, if it wasn't winter access, that would mean it would be graded and so that it's level and mowed? And would it be surfaced in any way if there was no intention to winter access?
Well, I think that, you know, there's going to be times in the spring of the year that people are going to want to come park here. It's going to become muddy.
Yeah.
Sloppy for people to get in and out.
Well, we can always... I mean, the state says you can't go on trails certain times of the year when it's all muddy and all that. Right, true. Somebody lost their Toyota... See that? Do you want to proceed here?
See what you want to see.
All right, so I think unless there's any more questions, we can head back out.
So, what do we do with our little one-lane road all the way out here?
You have to turn around, and this parking area would have to be rated unless you turn around.
Here?
Okay, how about passing by when you meet cars on our road?
Yeah, that's something with Chapin Road itself is a very narrow Class 3 road. I mean, when we meet neighbors, one of us has to pull over.
Right.
We're well aware of it.
And when all this whole housing development was going in, that was a point that I brought up. And Margaret Bowling was on the review board back then, and Mr. Scribner, that put all those houses in, brought them $2,500, if my memory serves me correctly.
Right.
The town, $2,500 to upgrade the road. I said, "$2,500 isn't going to buy a culvert and a load of gravel."
No, that's actually not what happened. So, I was at the hearing, and what Don Singleton did, he was the road commissioner then, was he, by agreement, they got a written agreement, that the developer would pay for the upgrade cost, because Don, the commissioner, did not trust that the developer, for whatever reason, was going to bring it up to proper standards and build the road to our specs. And he didn't want the back and forth, because he opposed this development.
So, the compromise...
So, the compromise was that the town would do the upgrading and then bill the developer. And I think they held back the permits to the development until that bill was paid.
Right, and then it's in everybody's deed, right?
So, this was... This road width, all that was decided before the development went in. And the folks who bought into the development, bought into it knowing that their road would be that width. It wasn't a surprise, didn't happen after it was developed.
Yeah, I'm not talking about from where Chapin Road ends down through there. I'm talking about Chapin Road.
All the way back, yeah. Just the Class 3 itself is pretty narrow.
Yeah, because Blackberry Ridge is Class 4, right?
The developer had to develop the whole thing, had to upgrade the whole thing. That was, I think it was $7,000 or $9,000.
It's still wearing a truckload of gravel and two culvers.
No, it was not. No, he didn't want to do anything with the development.
And I asked Margaret Bowling, how much material I could buy.
There were some other issues. He wasn't paying taxes on the lots he couldn't sell. There was all sorts of stuff.
It doesn't surprise me. He's a worker.
All right, you ready to head back?
Little sex, too.
Oh, wait a minute. Alfred wants to... Mark?
I think that regardless of what we do here, if it's going to be...
Can we please be so quiet?
Parking area, we're going to have to cut some of these trees to widen that, at least from here to Blackberry Ridge a little bit, because it's just not... You're not going to get a car in there, in and out of there at different times of the year.
So, you would work with the tree warden, who happens to be here, Neil Maker?
Yeah.
To mark the trees, Neil?
Is that what your... The orange flags on this side are kind of like where you imagine...
Where I would think you would want to cut back, too.
Yep.
So, we'd cut that beautiful tree there.
But again, not knowing what we're going to do.
Sure.
If it's winter use, we probably have to go back even more than that, because we'd have to cut into that bank to widen it out a little bit.
Yep. Well, and I think that's to be determined about the winter use.
Right.
You know, I mean, Larry remembers, and I do remember that discussion now.
Regardless, I think, you know, at least some of the brushy, the smaller stuff would have to be cleared out. Just so everybody knows.
Up to this point, Alfred?
Well, from here out to the...
Yeah, because I saw a couple more orange... Are those ones you put on?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just kind of like a little turnaround down there. Just wondering, like, what the conservation commission needs, if that would... You know, that current area is that, you know, sufficient for a couple cars? I mean, that's what hunters do right now, so, you know, instead of developing a new area...
Are you thinking of putting it down there?
Yeah, you know, where it kind of widens, and then the Class 4 road continues down, but there's like an opening right there that you can...
Are you talking about on this road?
Yeah. Just down another 100 yards or so.
You want to go look at that?
It wouldn't really be like needed to be developed, but if there's truly just going to be a few people using it here and there, that's what hunters do right now.
I don't know that we want to put a parking area that far in.
Well, why don't we check it out and then make a decision based on what we see?
Developing it would just be kind of using that natural end, given that it's a low enough population of people coming here, you know?
Well, why don't we just walk, if it's 100 yards, why don't we just walk down?
Yeah, I can point out where it is.
What are we going to see? This is the property line.
It's so near.
There's another road down here? Is that what you said?
Well, so what I'm trying to describe, and I'll show you here in a minute, is that this goes down the old Class 4 road that we're on kind of there on the right.
Yeah.
And there's an opening on the left that if you want to come down with trucks or something, it's easy to turn around.
Yeah, but would we want people driving further down? That's my question. Why would we want people to drive further down?
So, one thing I'm considering is the conservation commission is still up, this is, you know, for a few people to use. And one of our concerns is that it might be not a few people, it could be a lot of people.
They'd have to find it first.
But yeah, if it gets up on the road, something like that. Just while we're here, figured I'd show an opening that's currently there.
Is this it, right here?
This is... This is one, yep. And then there's one further down, but this is already kind of a little more open than the other part.
But I guess my question is, that means that people have to drive further down this road?
I mean, they can currently drive down this road right now, so it's just a matter of awareness of it.
There's a little bit of an issue, more of an issue with water runoff down this steep or slope, too. That's because if you... It's not huge, but it's...
This is flatter, Rick.
Well, it's flatter up there.
There are hills coming down with dumping water into the parking area, and this is flatter, it doesn't have that problem.
Well, this is going to drain into this. You're going to end up draining down into this road. That's more what I'd be worried about.
Well, what's the advantage to here?
I don't know.
I think the other site would be, close to the road, would be probably better personally. That would be...
More level.
Yeah, it is. It never was runoff.
But I think Rick makes a good point about the runoff.
I think it's important that you see it. That's what we're doing. Okay?
I've been here a couple times now, so...
That's all we're doing.
That's right. That's why this is called a site visit? Okay. So, okay. All right. Thank you for showing us.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Just figured while you're here, point it out.
Yeah, no, it's good. Rick, did you take a picture of that?
That sugar nut down the road a little ways near?
Yeah, that's Tyler's. Yeah, he's been working on that, so he's parked down there.
Okay.
Yeah. So, that's been his kind of weekend.
So, you've lost the whole...
No, she doesn't have any separation anxiety like my dogs do.
But if you go to the current town, the other town forest, where the old west church, no one goes. The bike riders go.
Hard to see exactly where the road actually is.
Oh, really? There's no cars parked there.
I'm Dine's Wheeler, by the way. I don't know if we've met. Nice to meet you. I think... Yeah, I think I... Okay, I remember you, yes, but I couldn't remember your name. I've never been back here. No. Well, this is why it's nice to do it now, because summer it was too hot and bugs. Yeah.
No, it's...
Well, they're everywhere. Yeah, so there's one tree he's marked here. Thought I saw a couple more little orange tapes. Now, do you see a lot of wildlife, like bear and moose? Do you? Very cool. Well, we're not fragmenting it. Fragmenting it would mean dividing it up into lots.
From the point of view of a car, but for driving, for walking.
But you knew this was here when you bought the house, right? Yeah.
What is spectacular about it?
Well, it's a beautiful hardwood forest mostly, but with areas where, in season, it's just a sea of ferns and things. And a spectacular, steep ridge is more or less the west boundary of it.
Okay.
And so, it's, you know, and it's like, if you haven't been in the woods before and you like the woods, you know, you're going to get excited when you see it for the first time.
Okay, I got to walk the whole thing sometime, for sure. By the way, my friend Rob went and hiked by himself the town forest trails yesterday. He said it was so well-signed, he didn't have any trouble finding his way around. So, I wanted him to be, kind of go out by himself without me, to just see, you know, as a guinea pig, to see if he could figure it out. And he said it was easy-peasy, you know? The only thing he suggested was, you know, having more signage at the end of the north spur, which we already know about, just to make sure. Because he could, you know, without the signs, adequate signage, he couldn't tell where it kind of ended, and he walked out there where he shouldn't have.
Yeah, well, I mean, I would think that the big, no trespassing sign right there would be a good dip-off.
By the time we're done this weekend, it'll be well-signed, I'm sure.
Now, Tyler Clark is here, right?
Look at the old town.
Which one? On this... On what side of the road?
His house on the left, which is coming up. He's the one with the granite mail culvert straight there.
602 Chapin. Now which one is he? He's here, right?
Yeah, he must be with the straggler.
I think he's wearing a green sweatshirt.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Taller guy, wearing a hat.
And Dale Leferyer, he doesn't live here, he lives on George Road.
He's George Road.
And George Road, does this, so this road, if you took it all the way?
This will go to Pekin Brook.
To Pekin Brook.
Pretty close to the George Road.
The other side is just like a paved turnaround.
Denise, his land does come up. He lives on George Road, but he owns a lot of the land that you go down on.
Now who's this we're talking about?
Ah, Leferyer.
I've only been here
Hey Jimmy?
Yeah.
I got a little There we are, right here. This is the
Well, they're running down all these
This is Leonard, okay, this is George Road that comes through here.
Yeah, that might be it. I think it is somewhere in between those two.
Yeah, because that's, there's the guy that owns property and a little cabin right there. And that's on this abutting side to the town forest.
Right.
So he's kind of got back until it goes to Doug Lilly's. And he's the back, back perimeter of the town forest.
Oh, gotcha.
Where the hill slopes up to like cliffs.
Yeah, yeah.
Doug's is on the top and he's the farmer up on Lightning Ridge Road.
Okay. Right.
This is alternative site three. Oops, sorry. Well, and of course you can't see it.
Yeah.
Now.
Well, I'm famous, all right?
We're just, be beautiful guys.
This is not bad. Yeah, do you? And it's nice and flat. Yeah, makes sense to me.
Yeah, but what do I know? He's the one who should do.
Right. I was getting acclimated to kind of who lives where and
Well, that's good, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, that's fine. Now Alfred, would people be able to like drive in, park, and then back, you know, so you
I was telling them, I think it's wide enough so it could you could have parking on that side, parking on that side, and still have room enough in the middle for people to back out.
Right, that makes sense, right?
Yeah, this is a better site.
Okay.
I would say site three is a better site.
Conservation commission.
Right, oh, that was the conservation commission's choice. Okay, you agree that this could be a better site.
But you're thinking the conservation
Neil!
Neil and Larry.
What do you think, the conservation commission, I guess, I thought Alfred had designated the parking area. But you guys designated the parking area down there, what about a parking area here?
Yeah, easier, wider.
Sure.
It's less trees than you think.
Yeah. I don't, I think we probably just kind of walked in and said, oh, that seems like the place.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Well, we took a picture of it and where did he go?
I don't know.
He held up a sign to show that this would be like alternate site three because we had this other site that the neighbors showed us. And then the original site, so this is site three.
Maybe we wanted this small, this is a better site because it's further away from the south.
Oh, probably. Who? Kyle Booth? Kyle Booth? Kyle Booth? Is that Booth Brothers Mill? Is it? So I got it spelled wrong then.
Because it's not like there's a destination with a view like the top of a mountain or something, right? Up in there, but I mean hydraulic pressure
Most people are just gonna walk along there.
I don't know, the people are just pretty service. Walk.
It's beautiful.
It's gonna get on these wheel rides.
Have you ever been out there?
That's right.
All right, we ready to head back? What do you think, John?
Jay's place and then the next one on.
The neighbors might have more of a concern. Well, they wanted it way further down.
Yeah, he's on the trail.
You know, and you can see why, this makes more sense as far as people That's why I said, you know, way, way down there, people are gonna have to drive all the way down, back and forth.
You know, when the tow truck has to come in to pull them out.
This is closer, right? All right, let's head back. So we can get this done. You like this site? What about this, what about this site?
I think it's, I think it's It certainly looks to be more level, the slope is the problem.
I mean, there's gonna be drainage.
Probably stabilize this piece down in ways, just to keep
No, 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 just some kind of surface.
You can drain it that way.
If, well, no, you, it's not gonna, you'd have to cut a huge amount out of here. I'm not saying you don't do it, I just tell you, you're gonna get a natural tracking water that way. I mean, from from this road and from
Water runs downhill.
It does, it's gonna go
But usually the way
Are you Tyler?
Doesn't matter where you
Trying to get my people to see
He's gonna find a place to run because water runs
Me neither. I think it's minimal.
I mean, people aren't saying, you know, writing me emails saying, God, if only I could have a parking area, I'd come down here. I frankly don't think anyone's gonna be here. I think it's gonna be a grand disappointment.
Oh, really? I mean, people gotta find it first.
I mean, chickering bog and parking lots empty all the time unless it's a special event.
Right.
All the time, that is
And that's very well known.
That's a fancy place.
And that's very well known.
It has a destination.
Yeah. Yeah, and it's promoted by the nature conservancy.
The big observation
And it's empty all the time.
Right, and that's, it's on Lightning Ridge Road, which is pretty well
Yeah, yeah.
This is gonna be way out.
Well, word passes and that's all it needs to be. All right, you guys ready to head back? So we can adjourn? Yeah, we're gonna, are you guys ready to head back so we can adjourn? Come on, come on, Cheddar. I don't know yet, we'll post it on the agenda. I don't know. Conservation commission is meeting tonight.
I can't remember if it's Chapin Forest, it's on, I don't know why it's on. I guess it's just, I think it's probably just
Talk about this.
Talk about what happened.
Yeah, no, it's on the agenda for tomorrow night, I looked. All right. If there's nothing else, what time is it, please?
5:41.
Okay. Where's another member of the damn select board? All right, I move we adjourn.
Okay.
Hey, Rick?
We can do it with just us.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Okay, we're adjourned, thank you everyone. Beautiful day for a walk, thank you.